That is right. Okay, cool. Thanks, Andrew.
So equally exciting presentation for that.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm going to bring an energy report to the board. I know several members are... This is the first time we've actually sat down and provided like an update and information on our energy consumption. Energy is kind of a loose term. It's really all of our utilities. Water, water, gas, natural gas, and electricity are all used in various ways, but give up for energy for the building. And our buildings obviously consume quite a bit of energy and utilities. My budget for utilities is in the neighborhood of about $2.2 million. And so anytime we can save, look at the data and see what it says about our schools, we can use that data to improve. So I'm bringing some of that data to you tonight. We'll go over it. We'll review it. It definitely will show you, I'm going to go through this up, but it will definitely show you the value of new buildings versus buildings that are older. And so I got just one quick agenda here. Talk a little bit about our annual usage at all of our buildings. I will compare it to other schools. We have a database that we can reach into and see some stuff that's similar. Talk a little bit about what we do right now on a regular basis to save energy. What kind of renewed focus can we have on this and what can we do better? And then what energy program and energy magic program what we can do in the future and what it may look like. I'll open this up just to let you know, you know, I guess that John Kerr's our newest building nine years, it's nine years old outside of this building in Shahada. You won't see this building or Shahada in this presentation because they are very new. We don't see any trends there with basically being up for two years. But you will see John Kerr Elementary School, which has been open nine years, and you will see that it will show you how much more efficient a new building is. Our other buildings, as you know, Hanley built in 1923, renovated 15 years ago. Daniel Morgan was built in the 70s, renovated in 2001, so it's been 25 years since that building's been renovated. And then Frederick Douglass, Virginia Avenue, and Quarles are all in that 30-year range, right around 29, 30, 31 years. So you'll see some numbers that show you each of these buildings. So I'll start with electric usage. And these are each of the school. You can see the school on each of these, each of these charts in the upper left-hand corner. And these do reflect usage over the last seven years. Okay? And this is the monthly usage. So this is an average of all the entire 12 months of the year. This is going back to school year. So it's June, I'm sorry, July through June. And you can see there are a couple of like interesting points here. So one is Daniel Morgan. You can see a significant increase in electric use the last couple of years. And so we are in the process of investigating that. I sat down with Brian. He's our systems engineer, and we looked at some things. And one of the things we think that kind of flagged that is we took out a water heater for the building, but the whole building was natural gas prior to, right after COVID. And then we had to replace it. So we replaced it with an electric one. So that drove up our use a little bit. And then we also had, I learned, I didn't know this, but I learned that we started leaving the HVAC and the heat on a little longer in that building because we changed the hours of our night custodians. And so the building was getting very cold towards the end of their shift, so we left it open a little bit longer. We left the heat up a little bit longer, left the AC on a little bit longer. And so that drove up the usage as well. One thing that's very interesting about this, these charts, is at John Kerr Elementary School, if you look, John Kerr Elementary School uses about, if you see those red lines, they kind of show you the average right across the seven years. John Kerr Elementary School, which is again our newest school, newest elementary school, our newest school outside of Shahada, it uses the same amount of energy as Quarles and Virginia Avenue. Okay? But John Kerr is completely heated and cooled via electricity. It's also a building that's 30% larger than those two schools, and it uses the same energy. Again, it's more efficient. That building is more efficient designed. It's got several design factors in it. It's south facing, so the windows are facing the way the sun crosses across, so we use a lot of natural light. All the lights in John Kerr are LED lights. And so you get to the older buildings that are not, and they have become much less useful or much less efficient. The other thing is that Quarles and Virginia Avenue use natural gas to heat them because they have to do the boilers. You do see a natural little dip on each one of those around COVID. As you can see, the buildings were a little less full. We used a little less energy during that timeframe.
What is, sorry, Frederick Douglass is considerably lower than all of the elementary schools. What would you attribute that to?
It's considerably lower than Kerr Quarles and Backdies. It's a smaller. It's a smaller. It's a much smaller, there's a smaller student base. So we have nearly, we have 250 students there, right? Yeah. Versus six, or is it 400?
400, Virginia Avenue and Quarles.
Yeah, John Kerr's bigger.
550.
So it's probably the number of students.
And we don't eat the hallway.
True. And that's right. We did not eat the hallway. That's right. And we will now eat the hallway. But that is a very good point, yes.
Are the scales, scales look different on Daniel Morgan?
They are because they use, they are different. They are different. They're different because the, because of the usage. Obviously, you know, Daniel Morgan's not going to, doesn't use 6,000 kilowatts.
So the red lines, the average for that building.
Just that building, yes. Yeah, for that building, I apologize. Yeah. Make that clear. So on natural gas, again, Daniel Morgan, another high use, and we are, again, we're going to look at that. I'm not exactly sure. With that installation of the electric water heater, you'd think the natural gas went down because they're not using it to heat water anymore. So we still have some issues in Hanley, too. It went up after COVID and stayed up, and it's currently at that level. And so we are, we're going to look into those and try and figure that out. What's interesting on Frederick Douglass is that spike in the center is we lost a boiler that year. And we had to, we only had, we have two boilers in the building, and we lost one boiler. It failed inspection and we couldn't use it because of cracks in it. And so we had to run the other boiler constantly in the winter, for the entire winter. We had to run it constantly to keep the building warm. And so that's why the natural gas went up significantly. Now Frederick Douglass dropped back down after COVID. It came back up a little bit, but we anticipate even bigger savings at Frederick Douglass because we just completely overhauled their HVAC system. And so we anticipate that all of that new equipment should, we should see some significant decline in the usage at Frederick Douglass Elementary School. The interesting bullet point I put on here with John Kerr using 30% less natural gas is incorrect. It's actually, it uses one-third of the natural gas that Quarles and Backdies uses because of, because it doesn't have boilers in it. Obviously, the natural gas goes to the boilers at Quarles and Virginia Avenue. But yeah, so this kind of gives you an idea of where we're at, what we're doing, whenever we use, and what we see our buildings. Again, our older buildings are less efficient than our newer buildings.
In your notes, you say that DM campus and Hanley warrant investigation.
Indeed, yeah.
Why is Virginia Avenue not on that same list? Push me up the ground.
Yeah, it should, it should be looked at as well. I just didn't notice it. I was focused on that really big spike in Daniel Morgan. But yeah, you're right. Virginia Avenue after COVID, significant increase. Yeah, we're going to look into it. Again, I worked on this presentation over the last two weeks, so we just haven't had time to investigate all.
Sorry, this is just utilization. It's not cost, I'm guessing.
This is utilization, correct. It's not dollars because dollars fluctuate. Yeah. So we go, so actually, I put that in each slide. So electric is average kilowatt per month, thermes on the natural gas, BTUs, British thermal units, and then gallons of water usage. Water usage, again, Daniel Morgan, another big spike. We think we, we know the story behind that is we installed that football field, and they started playing football at there. And we had a couple of very hot summers, and we ran that sprinkler system all the time to try and keep that field up, up and running and alive and doing well. So we can see a spike in water usage there. Again, not sure where Hanley is, but the rest of ours kind of settled down after COVID's flattened out a little bit. But we will, we will investigate all of these as we move forward with a better focus on utilities and energy management. And we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to do that. But first, one more thing I want to show you. We can compare our schools to other schools in the state of Virginia using what's called energy use intensity or EUI. And the EUI is part of the Energy Star website. And your school, the EUI allows you to compare different buildings. It also takes into account some characteristics, so size, what state you're in, what climate zone you're in, and that kind of stuff. What it doesn't do, there's a few caveats to the comparisons. Just again, I'm not saying that it's not good information. It is good information, gives us a good baseline. However, what it doesn't tell you is, you know, the age of a building. It tells you that the building was built in, for instance, we would put Hanley in as 1923 when we put it in to try and find comparable schools. Oh, first of all, there are no comparable high schools of that size built in 1923 that are still standing in Virginia. But they also don't tell you when it was renovated, or when they might have overhauled HVACs or windows or lighting components or any of that other stuff. It doesn't tell you that. So you don't know, but you're still able to compare to similar. The other thing is that this is self-reported, and so there are some schools that may be reporting their renovation date as the build date. You know, we don't know things, some, there are some things that we don't know. But it does, like I said, it does give us. But the age of a building is also in a window. So they say, and it's a 20-year window. So from 1920 to 1940, 1940 to 1960. And as we all know, things change in 20 years. If your school was built early on in the period versus later in the period, you might have older equipment or less efficient equipment or equipment that's not up to speed like others. But so, and then the size is also in a big range. So for elementary schools, it's from 50,000 to 100,000. So if you have a 50,000 square foot building versus 100,000, it's going to be, it's going to have different characteristics. But these are all Virginia State schools, and they are all operational, operationally the same characteristics as, and they're all open for the same amount of days, 180 days of school each year, that kind of thing. Summers are a little different. You might have some summer programming in a building, or you might shut it down. So there's some variance there that you might see. But we're going to look at the EUI of our buildings versus those in the state. So on this chart here, it shows you, I put it in parentheses, the number of buildings that are in the database that it's comparing to. So a school of Frederick Douglass's size built between 19, I think it was, I'd have to look, but it's, it's in this 20-year range of 1990. There are less than 100 schools that self-report their energy use. Garland Quarles had, built in 1955, has less than 50 schools to compare to. So that just gives you an idea of how many you can compare to. Okay? So again, I provided you with the year it was built, the square footage, and then what the EUI, the measurement, is based on our input into the database and what the data algorithm of the database is spitting out. You can see, as I mentioned, John Kerr Elementary School is right there at the mean source, the mean of that source EUI. These schools here in the yellow are ones that we have done considerable work on mechanical systems. And mechanical systems are where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck when it comes to energy management and energy efficiency. Okay? Getting this new equipment in there, equipment that's running smoothly, you will get, you'll get some very heavy lift on that for your efficiency. So those three buildings, Frederick Douglass being the biggest one, we just overhauled that, spent almost $7 million on that school's HVAC and lighting. So we should see significant improvement over the coming year. And we just wrapped that up. That project just finished up in November, and so we will start looking at that on a regular basis moving forward. Virginia Avenue, we updated their chiller, so we should see significant improvement in their HVAC costs. And then Daniel Morgan, same thing. We upgraded equipment packages for their rooftop units. Those will have less impact than the Frederick Douglass renovation simply because the Frederick Douglass renovation was a complete overhaul. But we anticipated those. Now Garland Quarles and Hanley High School are not due, are worse scores. We don't have any big plans for overhauls of any of their mechanical outside of what we may do. And you'll see that in my next presentation about the capital improvement plan, what we would like to do with Quarles. But you can see Quarles, and we knew this, we knew that Quarles is inefficient, and we knew that it's, it needs the work that it needs. And so this provides you with that information.
It says John Hanley doesn't have any schools to compare itself to. So how do we know that we're in the red?
Well, we're in the red for schools that were that size. I had to try to drop the year and look at this. I'm sorry. Yeah, I just used schools that were the size of, in that range of 100,000 to 400,000 is what they're used. And so that school's 310,000 square feet, so I used that. I'm sorry, I didn't make a note on that, but that's, that's how I did it, you know?
So it might not be as bad as it looks on this slide.
It may not be. It was done 15 years ago, and so I don't anticipate that it was. But I had to compare it, I wanted to compare it to something, so I just took the square footage.
And as you're reviewing this, I want you all to keep in mind, we're about ready to launch our new strategic plan.
Right.
And so be thinking about what your goals are as a board in this space of energy efficiency, and not just with buildings, but you know, with all green and stuff from electric buses to solar panels, et cetera, because I think there's a lot of room for us to improve personally. I'd love to see us make that a priority in the coming years. So you know, we're just getting started with this kind of recording mechanism, and we will continue to do so over time, but keep that in the back of your mind.
And building off of what Jason's saying, I'm reminded of the Shahada wasn't a new build, it was a renovation of a John Kerr building. And this board, as it was constituted back then, we put forth really cool energy-saving ideas, some which were retained, like the solar, what are those?
Solar tubes.
So if you go through the Shahada Center, you'll see a lot of the lighting is coming directly from the sun via these solar tubes. But one of the first things on the chopping block, when we had to go to city council for funding for the Shahada Center, was the plan to incorporate geothermal heating and cooling in that building, which it's one of those short-sighted things because it costs more money upfront to do that. So if you want to save money on a renovation or a new construction, that's one of the easiest things to say, get the geothermal heating out and put the traditional stuff in, and it'll save you a lot of money. But now that we're, now that that building's aging, we would be reaping the cost benefits of that right now had we been able to do that back then.
Is Frederick Douglass middle geothermal?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Yeah. So as we, this board deals with building new buildings and renovating our older buildings, so it's something to keep in your mind. I would love it if we started, you know, being better stewards of the public's money long-term and not just short-term. Short-term, I mean, I get that, and it was a tough decision to make, I understand all of that. But man, now we're sitting here going, man, had we done that, you know, those charts that you saw, well, we don't have one for Shahada Center, but if we did, it would be much more.
Right. And to Brian's point, I think here in our next presentation, we'll be talking about Quarles a little bit.
Yeah.
I think that's worth. Absolutely. Yeah. And we had this kind of discussion at a work session one time where we talked about going green, you know, as it were, saving money, going green. Those aren't necessarily the same thing, right? Going green can mean we want to be good for the environment, and that can cost money. That can cost money, you know? Right? And, but saving money and putting more efficient LED lighting, that kind of thing, they make, it will cost you money upfront, but it should save you money over long-term.
Are there grants and things available now with the current administration putting forward energy efficiency?
Um, there is.
Public gatherings. There is.
Yeah.
The biggest one that's kind of national is the Electric Bus Initiative. You know, we have not joined a consortium to really go after that type of money, in part because we're really trying to be deliberate with our coordination with the city. We share the city yard, and you know, it's one thing, you know, to get one electric bus, but if we're going to go, we want to have a real plan for the next five to 10 years. I mean, with eight square miles, we're a great test case to have an electric fleet of buses, right? We're not worried about, you know, the battery running out of charge and stuff, right? So we're being deliberate with that, discussing with our city counterparts.
And there are costs to, if you said, hey, let's just run out and get one electric bus to see what it's like, well, there's a cost to that. It's not just getting a bus and saying, we're going to save on diesel fuel, and we're going to keep the air cleaner. But it's also, what's that?
The charging.
Yeah, we got to buy charging stations. We got to retrain mechanics, right? We have to find, we have to make sure that there's support in the area for repairing that bus if something were to happen, that kind of thing. So there's, there is a cost to it. It's, if it's something that the, I'll just give you an example. I know like Alexandria City, that school board is, we will have solar panels on every single school, on the roof of every single school, we will have solar panels. In Winchester, if I put solar panels on top of Hanley, I might get run over walking across the street. So it's just stuff you got to think about, right? Whenever you want to.
You have that whole field to that.
Yeah, actually, you come all down there, yeah.
So I've got a question.
Sure.
So what is the mechanism, right? If we're saying, okay, we're going to toss around these ideas, do you form a study group? Or is it, what is the, I mean, I didn't want to derail your presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we put in place those next steps so that way we maintain that focus on?
So I think as part of your, as part of your strategic planning, you would make it a priority as a board, right? And as a board, you need to commit resources, which means money, time, and people to doing that. And a good start would be a study group and saying, what are some of the options that we have? Now, one of the things I'm going to do moving forward, my capital projects manager just retired, Kevin, so he left. And so we're going to, and he was a part-time person. He was overseeing all of our projects. He was overseeing all of our capital projects, you know, the Frederick Douglass, the John Kerr, the Shahada. He was here for all that stuff. But he was also retired from the VR assistance, like only worked half-time, and he was only taking care of those projects. I'm going to turn that into a full-time position, and we're going to bring in somebody that's going to oversee energy management, because they're going to be very focused on it. So we'll have that resource. So it's the start, right? And then based on the board's, where do we want to go with this? We can take that back and form a committee and flesh out some of the things. I can also go to some school districts. There's other school districts. I'll just turn Loudon out there because I know that they have, they have an entire sustainability department. And so I can go sit down with them and either even take people with me. They will go through all the stuff that they do in their schools and what, what value it brings and what it doesn't bring. One of the things I'll tell you, Loudon doesn't, they get all their solar panels, their solar power, they buy all of their stuff upfront. Now, they have those resources, and it's very expensive, but now they are literally making energy from the sun by paying for that out of pocket. You can also go to a company and say, solar company, we want you to come and install solar panels, but you have to buy the power from them that the solar panel generates. So it's almost the same as buying it from the grid. You're just buying it from the solar panel, and you're still paying. They'll tell you that they can make your rate lower, but what they'll do is make you sign a contract for 30 years to buy it from them.
We all know that for cell phones.
Yeah, cell phones. But, so that's kind of the thing that we got to flesh out, right? What is the board committed to? Are they committed to, what resources do we want to put towards it? And you'll have competing resources for this, right? Obviously, you need the instructional side, and the technology side, wherever it may be, but you'll have to compete.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's sort of the question I had is, how do we keep this on the radar? Is it something that, a motion would need to be made to form some type of study committee now?
We can always see. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can always form an ad hoc committee to address some of these issues, but to Ed's point, the new strategic plan is coming up. And if we really want to put our money where our mouth is, I think that's the place when we start designing that, Jason. This summer, maybe?
Yeah, between now and July, yeah.
And that way, you know, that's, that's a, that's a strong statement to the community that this is something that we are very much in favor of and committed to doing. That said, I mean, it does, it costs money to be energy efficient. So it's, I don't know. It's, we've tried over the years, the geothermal at Shahada is a perfect example. We've, we've tried to do these initiatives over the years, and when it comes down to the, to the bottom line, sometimes that's the first thing to get, yeah, shot.
Yeah, I mean, we got the budget season coming up, and I think that'll be, you and I have nerve, like, okay, do what most pays, right? That's 95% of your budget, so you got 50% left over to do to, nice to have next.
Yeah.
And it gets tricky.
My main concern is keeping it on the radar, and that's what I was referring to.
Well, and I think what you're going to see at the end here is, number one, we need, you need a champ, for anything that's going to get done, you need a champion, right? And so what Ed's referring to in this, to hire is someone that, when they wake up in the morning and come to work, that's, that is part of their job. And then there's some other ideas that you'll see on the last slide that are some low-hanging opportunities for us to keep this on the radar. But even the fact that we're bringing this presentation to you, this hasn't happened before. And that's something we decided together to say, we need to bring this forward to the board to have, to do exactly what's happening right now, generate the conversation, assess your commitment as a board going into our new strategic plan development so that, you know, when we put words on the page for our strategic plan 2030, it's really clear what the board's priority is because we work backwards from that. So more to come. I don't think there's anything you have to do tonight. It's evident to me that our board cares about this, and that's, you know, we're taking some small steps in that direction.
One last point is, it may be worthwhile for us to reach out to the city councilors as well because, I mean, the building, I'm thinking of Hanley Library, Ralph's, you know, Hall, these are old buildings as well, and they're hopefully looking at data like we're looking at data with our old buildings. And I mean, this could be a shared position, for example, an energy, you know?
Yeah.
Zor. I don't want to use that word, but. An energy coordinator. Champion, that's it. An energy champion that works for the city and the school. Anyway, just something to keep in mind, we're about to have a joint meeting with city council and so.
Yeah. So this, that EUI ties right into your Energy Star score at your, in your building. And the Energy Star score is just a more refined number. It includes some weather data and that type of stuff, but it measures how well your property performs relative to similar properties. You have to have a 75 or above for two consecutive years to earn that Energy Star status. Right now, our score at Kerr is an 81, and it's above the mean score for similar schools in the state of Virginia. Again, it's also our newest school. It also has some stuff, some stuff, some design elements that help it. Again, with the LED lighting, the windows, those windows are actually designed with a shade that brings the sun in and disperses it through the room, so you don't even need lights in your room half the time if you're on that side of the building where the sun crosses across the earth. And so it was designed specifically with that. And hopefully, again, with the, whatever we do at Quarles or any other buildings we do moving forward, we'll always take that into consideration. And I think most architect firms do take that into consideration as they build. So these are just the scores you see. We've got room for improvement in every single building. Again, I think we'll see a significant increase in that Frederick Douglass Elementary score once we, once we start putting in the data. Just so everybody knows, we, ours, we have a software program called Energy Cap, and we capture all of our data in there, and we put that in every single month and then upload it. So we can, we can review this on a fairly regular basis. Once, we do have to put it in manually, so we have to get it done. But once it gets put in there, it takes into account, and we have a lot more, it's easier than just putting in one bill. We have probably 50 electric bills because we have so many meters around the building, around this district and stuff. Okay, so what are some of the things that we currently do to reduce energy consumption? One is that we do implement LED lighting anytime we can get a chance. You do have to change the ballast on them. Sometimes you got to rewire stuff, especially if it's in a building that's built in 1955 or 1972 or whatever it may be. But we do implement LED lighting, and right now, all of our gyms, all of our parking lots are LED lighted, lit. Uh, the CAO here, the operations building behind us, Frederick Douglass Elementary are all LED. We do have a policy that says no bus idling, uh, to save on fuel. Again, that's not necessarily natural gas or building-related, but it's, but it is one way that we save on energy. One thing that was interesting in the John Kerr, I think I pointed it out, was that they, John Kerr has, because of, again, it's part of its energy design, it has low-flow sinks and toilets. And so if we go back to that chart on the water, you can see that it's, uh, John Kerr Elementary, again, a 30%, is this smaller? Yeah. So 30% larger building is using right about the same as Quarles and Virginia Avenue is using, even, even Frederick Douglass, on average. So you can see that they're very, again, our biggest elementary school is using the same amount as some of our smaller ones, because we have those low-flow toilets and low-flow sinks in there. Again, as, as we've talked about, uh, energy efficiency systems and construction design, we always look at that, we always take it, um, as far as we can. And then, once we get down to the nitty-gritty, and it comes time to put stuff on the chopping block to get it in the budget, we do what we have to do. But we try and keep as much as we can, like we did at Shahada, we did keep, um, the solar tubes and the LED lighting up there. And then we do perform energy audits. We just performed our most recent one. We pick a couple of buildings each time that the schools are closed, and we go around and try to find, see who's, see what we can see as far as who's turning lights off, who's shutting down their computers, who's turning off their smartboards. And, um, we did two schools, and I'm not gonna name them right now, but we did two, and there was, there was a lot of electric, uh, a lot of computers, a lot of smartboards, and a lot of small refrigerators that were left on over the break, but nobody was gonna use them, they were just left running. And so, so we work, we'll work with administrators, we'll provide some feedback and work on, work on that. So what can we do to improve going forward? One of the things that I real, I found out while, while investigating and getting ready for this presentation is our, our, we do have an energy conservation policy. It was adopted 15 years ago, and it was worked, it was, we did have a, um, energy manager, um, and then my, about 15 years ago. And then my first year here, that person left and that position got removed from the budget. And so that is why the energy, they, they were doing energy management up until I got here, and then whenever that position got eliminated, um, it kind of fell by the wayside. And so that policy that's written, is written out of a, it's written as a, with a relationship with a private vendor that required that we put a policy in place that they could lean on whenever they're trying to make recommendations to us. I got, found all of this out from Kevin, who was my predecessor. And so there's information in that policy that no longer exists, it's just, there's no partnership or relationship with that company. Um, it needs to be radically adopted, reviewed and adopted. So we're gonna dig into that, and we'll be bringing that back to the board. And that'll, that's probably a good starting point, right? You asked about, you know, what can we do as far as keeping this on the, well, the first thing we can do is say, look, let's develop some policy around this, and what does it look like? And then we can make sure that we're doing stuff to improve that policy. Um, some of the things we've talked about is developing incentive programs for our schools to participate in changing their culture around energy use. Um, energy savings sharing program, where we share a percentage of the cost savings from that particular building with the school. They can use the money for whatever, but we take a percentage of, if we save, if we save $10,000, and we promised them $20,000 bucks, we send them a check for $2,000 and they can use it for whatever they would like to use. But just some, some incentives. Develop a green champion program, maybe we, we could even take a, a bigger part of that pool and we give it to the school that does the best on a percentage basis for their building as well. So there's some things that sound fairly simple, just gotta put them into place and make sure that they work. Uh, that cultural shift, as I mentioned, turning off everything when you leave, um, and, uh, closing the doors and closing your windows and not using energy when you don't need it. Uh, no, it's, you know, it's like having your teenager turn up at any time. So it's, it's just a matter of culture change and teaching, right? Um, we can review our purchasing procedures to ensure that all of our future purchases, again, this is part of, this falls under maybe construction, but it also falls under anything that we buy, whether or not it impacts our energy use, like whenever we bought that water heater, I don't think we put any thought into, what's this going, is it cheaper to go with natural gas? You know, do we go with electric, knowing that it was gonna cost us more electricity? Is that gonna cost us more in the long run versus a natural gas?
Is there a heat, is there a heat pump, water heater? Has a heat pump right on top?
On top of the water heater?
No, it's the water.
No, I think so.
I read a little bit about it.
Uh, no, I, I mean, we, I mean, we obviously have pumps all throughout our building, our HVAC system uses, uses pumps. But the water heater, I imagine, serves as just, I'm not a technician, so I don't know exactly how the water heater works, but it is a, it's a school-wide boiler. So it heats for the cafeteria mostly, and then for showers, if the students want to take them, those are really the areas that we would use a lot. Um, and then provide resources to the school through that capital project management position, uh, to improve their chances to success. And that last statement is just a generalized statement around, uh, improving anything really, set some clear goals, provide some coordinates, and make those successes. So yeah, I would have that, and I'm gonna talk about it now, that position, this program manager that I'm talking about hiring in, in the summer, we, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on hiring that until the end of this, this count, this school year and pick it up in the summer. But, um, the, the energy management, as I've mentioned, has been secondary to all of our main duties. That program kind of died on the vine whenever we are, the position was cut. We would assign this new capital project manager, not only projects, but also, uh, energy management. But again, this, this is just one step, right? It's a, it's an opportunity to indicate stakeholders that we do have an importance. There will be a person that will come to your building, that will audit you on a regular basis, that will talk to you about what you're doing, that will look into things and bring you feedback. So people understand that it is an important piece of what they are doing every day, not just the occasional audit whenever we do, whenever schools are closed. It'll be somebody that's on a daily basis referring to it.
This could be a position that pays for itself, assuming we, we save enough energy.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, completely.
Places to dollars, so.
Look at that, if you do 2.2 million in utilities and you save 5%, you're saving $100,000 to $10,000 a year. You know, you'd obviously return portion of that to schools. Position that I have currently is budget, right? It's not a new position, it's, it's a position. But it could, obviously, the savings could pay for itself. But that's a 5% savings goal. You know, the higher the better, right?
Yes.
I think that's it. Thank you. You know, go ahead.
Any more comments or questions for Mr. Smith?
I did want to point out, um, Kerr, their water cap's at 50, and everybody else is at 60, so it is considerably less, except for Frederick Douglass. That's really nice to see, those toilets and sinks make a difference.
They do, they should do. And it's even in the cafeteria, too. I mean, it's, wherever we use water, everything is just much more efficient than those other schools, based on their, their newness and the technology that's assigned, integrated in them.
Okay. Great conversation, thank you, Ed. Okay, the last part of the reports and presentations is policies for review.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Jennifer, I'm your policy person. And first, I just wanted to orient the new members of the school board, particularly for, um, policies for review. You'll see in our strategic plan that's listed in the memo that we review policies, all of our policies, at least once every four years. So this is a standing agenda item that you will see at every board meeting. These policies are not up for discussion, but if you see one in your review and you would like to discuss one, then you would let the board chair know, and he would put it on a future agenda for discussion, okay? So these are just for your review only.
Next question.
Yes, of course.
Thanks. What is the difference between this review and the ones that are up for minor or major revisions?
Do you want me to take that?
Sure.
Okay. So the General Assembly in Virginia meets every year, and they send us, and they'll make updates to Virginia code, and they will send us a long list of updates to our current policies, just based on minor code changes. You'll see outlined in some of your agendas what those changes look like. And then we work, the directors all work collectively to own those policies, and then we will bring those to you. We will identify whether those policies are a minor change, meaning it's just a code change or a legal reference change, or whether it actually a little bit changes the meaning of the policy, in which case we will identify it as major, and we will present it to you and explain what those changes look like. The minor changes, we just bring to you because it doesn't change the meaning of the policy, it's just minor little edits, and so therefore, we don't do a lot of discussion with the minors.
And then these ones where we're just reviewing it, is that like in the same kind of category?
The, these, these are for review only. We, we have to verify that the board looked at the policy, there's zero changes, there's no changes, there's no need for discussion unless you want to. But this is our mechanism to verify that every four years you have laid eyes on every single policy we have.
And this is good, thank you.
If there's a rule in this where we felt that there should be some change in one of the policies that are up for review, that is an appropriate discussion.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And, and this is the homework piece of the school, right? We don't read these word by word at meetings, you read these every weekend, what you're, yeah, can't fall asleep at night.
And we do, and we do outline in the memo specifically, in the agenda that's attached, like for example, here is the memo. If it's a, in this one, we're just, we're outlining which one you're reviewing tonight. But in the minor ones, that will outline specifically what the changes are to the policy, so you can see exactly what those are. Which is why we don't discuss particularly the minors a whole lot, because it's such, such a minimal change.
Can you go back to the agenda really quickly? This is good, um, for the new members here. Um, when you see this section, report, reports and presentations by staff policies, you'll probably see this every meeting. And this is the one where we look at it, maybe somebody has a question, oh, what is in this policy CH? And, but we don't do any changes. If you want to change something, you would have to contact me or Mike, or both of us outside of the meeting, for us to put it on a future agenda. That's what this is here, future action items. Again, we're not taking, um, we're not making any motions tonight on future actions, but these will be, um, added to a future consent agenda here. So when we approve these consent agenda items, you'll see, um, revisions to policies, assuming nobody has a problem with them, they will appear on the consent agenda item. And then you get to the action items here, number eight, this is where we take action. This is where we vote and make motion and all that stuff. So it's just a logistical kind of orientation to the agenda.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course.
And we are working tonight to, we are, Madam, we are very close to being on track for our policies. We're gonna get a bunch more in February, so our goal was to get, we're getting quite a few through tonight so we can catch up and be ready for the next batch that we get.
We have a lot of hope.
Yes.
There's a test.
Any further questions about the ones for review and the process for this?
May I make one, uh, because on your memos, Ms. Buckley, and, and this also goes for 7A and 7B. There, and the second paragraph, it says, these policies were also reviewed by the equity coordinator. And then we have the equity.
Check.
Is it the minor revision? I didn't jot down where this was.
Equity and family.
It's at AH.
Oh.
We're changing.
Oh, yes.
The name, not changing the name, but instead of equity coordinator, it's now gonna be equity and family empowerment coordinator.
That's the actual title of the position.
So in the future, that should be also changed on these memos, where it says, these policies were also reviewed by the equity coordinator. Just, I mean, if we're doing any policy, we should also do it.
Got it.
That's just, that's just a asterisk. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I think I'm on the asterisk level.
Yes, well, uh, any comments or questions about 6C? These are just the policies for review. Hopefully, you were able to put eyes on them over the weekend. This is Dr. Ted.
Yes, I just wondered about the advertising, why they dropped the sale of intoxicants.
That seems redundant. I, I looked at that, too. It's under.
Thought it was redundancy from prior.
Oh, maybe, are you on the minor revisions?
Probably on the minor.
Yeah.
Yes, not on this.
So sorry, we're not there yet, we're, we're still on 6C.
I thought we skipped ahead.
Okay, I don't hear any questions or discussions? Okay, so we'll move along then to 7A, the minor revisions to policies. And here is where we have.
Yes.
Uh, KJ is at the very bottom.
And like I mentioned before, just really quickly, this is where it will tell you exactly what was updated and why we are making it up.
And I assume the comprehensive plan was updated to align with the.
That's 100% correct.
So what was your question?
So it's on the advertising. The line about not advertising intoxicants.
So scroll down, you'll see, yeah, it's, it was omitted.
Yes, they took that out. Commercial establishments whose primary source of revenue is the sale of intoxicants may not advertise in school publications.
I was wondering, because the second line says, school regulations must secure approval from the principal of course of issuing advertisement, blah, blah, blah. I just assumed the principal would never allow that anyway.
That's correct, that's correct.
So it's just kind of remembered.
Right. And this, look at, this is 2014, the last time.
Yeah.
So this has been a while, so they, yes, they're omitting that, obviously. That's not something we would ever.
That's mine.
My lightning bolt.
That's right.
Maybe like a smoke-free zone would cover a whole yard, cigarette.
Mr. Rutherford?
Well, is this, so are the revisions, do they come from within our school district? Is it recommended by?
The VSPA, so I saw, I should mention that first, the Virginia School Board Association sends us their attorneys vet these policies after they come out of the General Assembly, and then they send us their recommendations.
So one guess, and I don't know why these aren't footnoted for explanation, but could be, for instance, say there's like a pizza establishment, technically its primary source of revenue is alcohol, then they couldn't advertise and hand the goal. If, but that would be a, a rough guess, but is there a way to substantiate why they make the changes?
Yeah, we, if we really wanted to know, we'd get a call of VSPA and talk to their attorneys, say, help us understand why this was stricken, and we're certainly happy to do that, and between this meeting and the next meeting, we'd get the answer to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious, too, now that, now that we raised it, and there's, nine times out of 10, there's a really reasonable reason, like, oh, of course, you know.
My take is they probably don't want vape shops advertising in the school gym, something like that.
Well, actually, it's a publication, it's just a publication.
Yeah.
Oh, good point.
Where was that?
School publications, oh, yeah.
Yeah, like that yearbook and the, yeah, students basically says.
In school publication. So it's not even.
So none of the revisions to policy are internal, internally generated?
So that can happen, that can happen. For example, um, I can remember one with our student code of conduct, when we added restorative practices, you all might remember that in the last couple of years. That was not outlined as an intervention in our current student code of conduct policy, so I did bring that out of mind. So I won't say that never happens, but we certainly want our policies to actually represent what we are doing. So most of our, the majority of the changes do come from the VSPA, but there are times internally, we, we could bring.
But some of them are dictated by the legislature.
Sure, that's right. Yeah, but, yes, but it's not, you know, I have, we have done that before, to your point.
I think sometimes you brought one before the board, I was like, I have no idea why we still have this policy, that building doesn't even exist anymore.
Right, right. Any other questions on the minors?
But they are your policies. You, you, you contract a service, as do 90% of the divisions in the, in this Commonwealth, to use their attorneys who are experts in this, they provide us the recommendations. But at the end of the day, if you wanted to create new policy, change it, wordsmith it, you can. But this gives us a starting point, typically.
Great, all right, moving on to the major revisions.
Doug, do you mind if I go first? Okay. Um, I am bringing to you all a new policy tonight, um, at the recommendation of the VSPA, we were just talking about them. Um, and it is specific to written notification of a violation of school policy by students, specifically in our alternative education programs. This has been a recommendation for probably over a year from the VSPA, and I'm bringing it tonight because it is something that we already do. And the supporting document with this, if you had a chance to look at that, look at that, is our student behavior administrative response document. And the reason that I included that is because you will see clear lines of communication every time we have a behavioral incident with our students, whether it be a phone call, whether it be a meeting, um, and we always notify our families in writing when a student has a major referral at school as it relates to discipline. So this particular policy, um, does require that the alternative education administrator be in contact with the family when there are specific incidents of behavior within two days following the incident. We do that oftentimes the same day. So this policy, it makes sense for us to have it because we already do it, it's just we currently don't have it, which is why it's labeled as a major. So, so this is something I'm just bringing to you all tonight because I do think it would be proven for us to add it to our policy manual.
Any questions there? Okay, is Doug doing the other one?
Doug is doing the other one. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And I bring to you professional staff, policy GC, and provides you an explanation here in the memo, uh, as to why. And this is one of those, those do. And this is one of those that is due strictly due legislative change. The House and Senate bills have changed it. And I'll use the policy itself to go over with you. We call it a major because it does provide us yet another alternative pathway of licensure that has been sorely needed. You recall since 2020 with COVID and the brief resignation, which was led by teachers across the country. We have not recovered from that in the ensuing years after the pandemic. The legislature and the Department of Education look for ways to provide means to help us with recruiting, hiring, and retaining quality teachers. So there are a number of alternative pathways. You know, of course, of our members, you're aware, we may only issue a contract to someone who either holds or is eligible for a license in the state of Virginia. Well, they've enhanced the alternative pathways to that by means, where it used to be, you could only hold a collegiate professional or a postgraduate professional license in the state of Virginia. Now there are alternative pathways. You can issue a provisional license, which means you have not reached all of the requirements. But while you're in process, and once you reach a certain amount, then they'll give you an additional three years to do it. There's seven or eight ways you could do that. The technical professional licenses, our CTE teachers, who come to us, I call them the Avengers. They come to us after 30 years as a fire chief or running a medical lab, and that life experience is counted towards their licensure. And then they get a technical professional license and an additional three years to get all the education requirements and how to teach and that sort of thing. What the change here does for us, you see the provisional, it's really on the second page. It's adding what's called a local eligibility license. And it gives us another option, albeit a smaller slice or niche, of people who might be eligible to gain a license to teach in the school division. The difference between this one and all those others that I just mentioned, all those others are issued by the Department of Education, goes through their Office of Licenseur, and we deal with them all upon a back important. This is issued by the school division and by the superintendent and the board. And it is a one-year, non-renewable license. The candidate must hold a baccalaureate degree from regionally-preminent institution higher education and has experience or training in the subject area that the school board or the superintendent deem appropriate for the teaching positions that we have of them. We have not yet utilized these qualities. We screened a couple of candidates for this, but haven't utilized this yet. But think about someone who perhaps spent many years in the classroom or to a junior college level, whatever, has a tie to the community and the school and might be a good fit, but they don't have all the courses that they need to do. The difference here is it has to be within one year or gaining all of them. And in addition to all the regulations that govern all those others that I just mentioned, it has to be these seven bullets down here below. So the first one, you cannot have more than 5% of your teachers hold this license. Now, we haven't issued one yet, but some of the larger school divisions are leaning on it quite heavily. If they have six or seven, four, five, six, 700 openings, they have leaned quite heavily. But the state says you can have no more than 5%. You may not do this in special education. You may not use it for someone who is already eligible for a collegiate and postgraduate professional license. They have to be within the one year, and it is non-renewable. So you're going to weigh between looking at someone's credentials. If they're close enough, it's a good fit. They don't have the education courses, but I can get them there in a year, but only a year because it's non-renewable, non-renewable. So some of these other provisional licenses that might have a higher qualification have to be within nine or 12 or 16 credits at full, but I need an additional three years. So you're only going to do it in this small slice where I can do it in a year. They meet these requirements. It's only valid within the issuing school division. So if you have a provisional, it can teach you anywhere in the state. You're not deemed as properly endorsed by the Department that allows us to harness people. They can teach anywhere. If you have a local eligibility, it's only good at the division which issues it to you. They are considered to be probationary teachers. We follow the rules there. And before, by the expiration, we must submit for full licensure, a collegiate and postgraduate professional license. And then the process is a little more flexible than with all those others. It can take weeks, months sometimes to evaluate looks, get to the state, see if someone's eligible for a provisional. Can I even get to the point where I can hire them or not? I can take an extended period of time. If you have a bachelor's degree, you need all these other qualifications. The superintendent issues the license. We notify the state, and you see that last bullet, within one month, the director of the Office of Licenseur, which is Dr. Brian Jackson, who we work with mostly regularly, he would use it, and within that month, it's approved, it's approved, and gives their stamp if they want. So we believe we will have use of this. We found a few thoughts to look at this. And it's a change in the legislature, so I'm recommending that you approve it as presented. And we deemed this major because it does provide a new opportunity and some substantial guidelines for having that for a teacher.
Good. Any questions or comments?
The accountability was the piece I was wondering about. So it does have to be approved.
Does have to be approved. And Brian Cox Jackson looks at it, and within a month of the issuance, they assure that you've done everything, you must follow all the regulations. So we have to do our homework. And it must meet those criteria, but then it is approved, and it can happen as quickly. I spoke with him at the VASMA conference in November. And the great thing about it, you do it, you can get an answer, you can move ahead.
And that's. And they may potentially be certified by the end of the year.
Have to be.
They have to.
Otherwise, so you could, in essence, do this, it could be approved. If they don't meet it for whatever reason, then you're done. You can't issue, it's non-renewable, you're gone. So you want to use it, be thoughtful about how you use it, you know, what's set. Say, if it takes a little bit longer, and perhaps I can meet the requirements for a three-year provisional, I might prefer to wait, get them that track. I want to make sure that they can get it in a year. But I didn't speed it up if they meet all the other criteria. So it's just another way that they're trying to have us find more qualified people to teach.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Joyner? Can we add?
That's it.
We should leave it. We're close to it. I just wanted to ask Dr. Joyner, because when I first read this, I wasn't in love with it until I read the first bullet about the 5%. What does that translate to number-wise for WPS, that 5%?
Uh, between 20 and 25 teachers. We have 417 on our TTT scale, about 3, it varies day to day, even, but 387, so 10 would be 45. I don't ever see us reaching.
We haven't used it yet.
We haven't used it yet. We screened a couple of candidates who we thought were going to be, because it just didn't work out with those people, but we've yet to use it.
That's a heavy load, learning to teach and also getting your certification.
Which is why especially, and we know that especially with our CTE teachers, we have support, but you really, you really want the technical professional license and you want that additional three years to get the one they need.
Good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to seven C, mid-year pay adjustments. Doug? Good evening. Yep.
He's got to give you his special place.
Yeah.
Good evening. You have before you a proposal for a mid-year teacher scale salary increase. It results in twofold. It aligns us with a market alignment with our neighboring division, and it allows our scale to have a step increment standardization of 1.5% between each of our steps. Currently, that doesn't hold true in our current scale. The average increase across all the steps would result in a $2,591 raise. Some would result in $200, some would result in $4,500. The cost for half of the fiscal year 2025, our current budget year, would be $430,315 with a March implementation, which is the mid-year. Total cost addition to our FY '26 budget year would be $860,630. Both of these numbers include what we, an estimate of benefits by GANVRS. It's gives you the breakdown for the FY '26 year of the $662,023 and $198,607. The funding source, we budgeted our FY '25 budget based on an eighth average ADM of $3,975 on average students.
Could you explain that state ADM?
Average daily measurement. Membership, sorry, pardon me. I always do that. Sorry, how could that be? Average daily membership basically is not the same as enrollment. And someone here, correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, I've only been here a year. It is basically the number of students in the seat per day averaged across the months. Am I getting it right, Chris?
And that drives our funding from the state, right?
So we get lump money according to that.
Correct.
We get a lump sum from the city. The flat, flat revenue stream, which does vary by student, but state is strictly driven by the number of students. Those of you that have been with us for the last couple of years, you know, we, this is a surprise. Like, we have enrolled a lot more students this year. It's like, whoa, okay, we have, it's a good thing. I'm glad to do this. But we did not anticipate to have another 145 kids sit in the chairs.
So our average over FY '25 currently through our November, at the time I created this slide, we're averaging at $4,120. We've actually increased through December to $4,132. This has been continually climbing, as Dr. and Heaton said, across since the beginning of the school year. We monitor our ADM every single month. So this will result in additional state funding, we expect, of a million dollars. We report our ADM to the state in March. And then they will make steps to increase our funding based on our March reporting data. So the mid-year increase will also allow us to complete for the FY '25, FY '26 biennial budget year for the state. They did place on the legislature, and they did pass, that there be a two-year minimum requirement of a 6% increase over two years. This will enable us to complete that between what increase we gave in FY '20 for this year, FY '25, and then this mid-year will bring us up to meet that requirement.
Surpass it.
Surpass it, yes, sorry. You're correct. Well done, surpass it. So from the slides, this is a comparison of our current TTT scale versus our proposed with the changes. This represents about 43 employees that are currently on steps that in the next slide, you will see, we would need to move them, that we would if this proposal is passed by the board, up a step to enable them to have an increase.
If you could just hold right there, I just want to make some comments historically, go back to them.
Sure.
Correct.
So what you notice here, and I'm just going to point out some things, but look at step 14-ish all the way to step 20. See how flat that line is? You're looking at about six or seven years of experience, and the difference in salary is negligible, somewhat flat. Then it peaks up a little bit. At the end of the day, on the blue, that's our current scale. There's no rhyme or reason, right, to how you get paid. 18 years, 12 years, five years. And that's because of the Great Recession and a number of what we call compression years, where we froze salaries for a number of years or a number of steps in order to, you know, back then, we were cutting money from our budget back in 2008. And that's just lasted year over year over year for going on, what, now, 16 years, okay? And so this is a really great opportunity for us, A, to give folks a raise. But when I presented this to the Teacher Advisory Council, you could hear some of the veteran teachers, like, finally, we're going to have a linear scale that is predictable, right, and something we can deliver on every single month and matches my experience. And so, not that teachers begrudge someone making a little bit more or less than them, but your experience should count for something. And if I'm teaching seven more years than the person teaching next door to me, and I'm only making a dollar more, like that, that kind of rubs people the wrong way, if you will. So this is a great opportunity to finally straighten that line and take care of this issue. This is a structural payroll issue, once and for all.
This chart is a comparison of our current TTT scale to the proposed TTC scale. And you can see in these years from the 11 to the 13, this is where I was stating in a previous graph that we have the 43 employees, that we would basically increase them a step. So if you were on a step 11, we would look at you as being on a step 12 so that you would get an increase, because otherwise, they would resolve in that increase. This shows you that the result of that $2,591 average and the sum would receive as low as $245, say, up to, you know, these higher level individual teachers would receive, you know, up to $4,000. What would the mid-year group get if they went up a step?
If you go from 11 to 12, you're going to get a couple hundred bucks there. 12 to, yeah, about, about $200 to $300.
Yeah. Because you get from 11, $63, $144, and $63,368. This chart comparison with the highlighted represents our current WPS scale versus our neighboring division. It shows that the neighboring division is ahead of us on 16 steps. As you can see, there are a few outliers here in our early steps and years. But here, from step 18 to 30, they range from $174 up to over $9,000 above our current.
This is, when you make market decisions, you got to know what your market is, right? So our market, of course, is wider than Frederick County, but it is our immediate competition, if you will. And one of the things we've said for a long time is, you know, people jump jobs for a lot of different reasons, you know, maybe for a number of reasons. But, you know, if you're within striking distance in salary, I'm talking $1,000, $2,000, people will jump for that over the course of a year. But when I saw this, my jaw dropped because in the later half of our scale, we are not competitive. And as you know, at the later half of the scale, that's also when folks are starting to think about retirement and that pension plan and what we're going to be receiving in pensions. So those highlighted cells on the right-hand side are really areas that we have to get more competitive. You'll see the folks that we were referencing earlier, steps 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. They're already well above Frederick County, right? So they're already making more than the same teacher in Frederick County, and we've got to catch up on the back half of our scale.
This is a comparison of our proposed TTT scale in comparison to our neighboring division. This says current here, apologize, it should say to the proposed WPS. You'll see that that reduces that 16 steps to seven steps. This is an outlier here on step two. But you'll see that we have brought in those 18 to step 30. And only from step 25 to 30 does it amount that they are still ahead of our scale by about the $5,000.
If you remember, last year, not only did Frederick County get a 6% raise across the board, all employees, they also chose to give a $5,000 stipend to any teacher, step 25 and above. And so that's what you're seeing there is that stipend, which is, you know, it's not a part of their base salary. It's something that, you know, they do plan to continue to give, that I believe, but it's by calling it a stipend, it could be flexible, and they could take it away at any point. But that's.
They're not getting the FICO.
The VR, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Loudly did that as well. We targeted the upper end of the year.
This last graph shows what the Winchester Public Schools proposed versus the Frederick County scale would then look like once, if we were to pass this mid-year salary proposal and we adjust the scale to the one and a half percent step standardization between the steps. So the blue is Frederick County. So, the blue is Frederick County, and then you'll see that that linear line that ours becomes, and you can see where this is those last 25 to 30 steps representing the $5,000 difference. Any questions that I can entertain?
Mr. Rutherford?
Sure.
I've seen in other, you know, not related to this finance stuff, but other situations where they compare with other school districts and things like that, are, is there standardization in other comparable types of school districts? Is this an industry standard to have, to try to achieve standardization in pay scale?
It is. Most school districts, you want to have a linear line, first of all, so that is industry standard. Many school districts, because of the Great Recession, you can see Frederick, that blue is Frederick, they had similar compression.
Sure.
They had lots of compression in their scale too.
Here, I have.
Yeah, look, it's that's two...
Step 2 to step 5.
Five, they all get paid the same amount of money.
Same amount.
Right. You'll find your Northern Virginia districts avoided that, so they still have a nice linear scale, with, I think there's typically 2% steps, and they always get a step, et cetera. But that is kind of the historical teacher methodology for pay, is your step equals your experience, right? And that's how you get paid. So that's...
We went to compressed scales.
Because I think in, maybe a presentation by Mr. Joyner, for somebody previously, and we're comparing to, you know, making sure that we're competitive with other, you know, potential school districts that are higher, is this going to help improve, is that like the competitiveness for everyone?
And we bring forward, we share with y'all, we'll share it again through our budget season, we have Clark, Warren, Frederick, Shenandoah, we throw Loudoun in there, even though they're significantly higher than us, but it's important to know what's out there. It's a 30-minute drive for some folks to get to Loudoun. We're using Frederick County as our primary, our only comparison tonight, just because it's our number one competitor, so to speak, in the local area.
Thank you.
You have other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Ms. McDonald. Next up, we have capital improvement plan, Mr. Smith.
Back.
Back.
Okay, good evening, again. So, this presentation is about our capital improvement plan. Our capital improvement plan is an annual plan that we put together for our facilities and real estate. It's typically presented in November, and then approved in December, and then presented to City Council for their inclusive, including it in their planning board dollars for the school, or for the city. And we will actually meet with them next week, right, next Tuesday, with the city joint meeting, you guys will be there, so we'll do a joint meeting with them to go over this again. I already presented this in December, it's presented again today for the benefit of our board members, and so I will, the actual document is on there, by the way, I got to give a shout out to Maggie over there, she makes it look so nice, she does a great job of laying it out and just putting the design together that's just easy to read and smooth.
I always wondered, because they do look really nice, I'm like, how is everybody in here? It's all Maggie.
It's all Maggie, yeah, even the templates here that I'm working with, I think, for Maggie's, she's got an eye for it, so we appreciate that. So, just a definition, very quickly, strategic, multi-year, it does cover a number of years, physical improvements, renovations, construction, maintenance projects for our facilities. In essence, we always want to provide good facilities, facilities conducive to learning that are safe for folks up in the building, and that are in condition to continue our operations, that were required to, and we try to keep them open, so that's when we're there. So, an overall, just a snapshot of the plan itself, it summarizes all of our existing facilities, you should look through, there's a chart, talks about all our buildings, when they were built, when they were renovated, what condition they're in. It reflects the share of the city's support for these facilities, with our debt service, just, we put that in there, we include that as part, so that folks understand what the city is paying for facilities every year, and so that's, the debt summary's in there as well. It does contain budget numbers for our projects, we go out and get quotes, loose quotes from folks, because obviously things don't get done immediately, and prices can change, but we get ideas of what things might cost us, and we put those projected costs, the budget numbers, in the plan. And then it specifies our current priorities. So, we keep the priorities to the tune of about $50,000, and then $50,000 and above is what really goes into this plan. We do have a section of it that's called Capital Asset Replacement Plan, which is not, it's less than 50, smaller projects can go in there. It is typically funded two ways, one, through carryforward money, so at the end of the year, whatever's left in the budget after the audit is complete, they say, you had this much revenue, and this much expenditures, and this is how much money you have left, they transfer, the city allows us to transfer that money into a savings account, basically, and then we use that money to pay for things. And I'll talk a little bit about what we pay for audit debt in a second. Or, for bigger projects such as Shahada or Douglas, the city will issue bonds, and will give the money to us to spend on these projects. And so, those are the two major ways. There are, there is another way called pay-as-you-go, pay-go cash on hand, and that's if the city has money in their accounts, and they want to just provide us with the funding to do whatever we need to do. And in fact, we're going to ask for that at the City Council meeting this coming, next week, where we're going to ask for them to fund a study of corals, and what we can do with that plot of land, and what the building that we have on there, we will bring in a team of architects and engineers to look at it, and say, okay, you can do this, or this, and they can talk about whether or not we should renovate, or whether or not we should tear down and completely rebuild, whatever's the most efficient and most cost-effective way doing that. But they can pay for that out of their current funding available to them. So we either have our pot of money, the city's pot of money, or issue bonds, that's okay. It does, again, I mentioned in the car, we do have some non-capital items, like landscaping costs in there. We do a lot of landscaping on all of our campuses, Hanley especially, such a large campus, and this is designed for the landscaping, and so we pay a lot of money to maintain. We also do set aside funds for future projects, so for our football field, we try to set aside money each year upwards of $60,000, and this, the document reflects it, so that whenever we do get to that point, because a football field costs in the neighborhood of a million to 1.3 million, when we get there, maybe we have half of the money saved up, or maybe we have a little bit more than half saved up, and that's because, like we do at home, we save, right, we sit down, we put money in our savings account, so that whenever the car breaks, we replace it. We do provide descriptions of the projects, and again, just a reminder, the projects are only completed if we have the money. We do not issue bonds, we do not go into debt for anything, we would have to go to the city. Okay, so, funding examples, I told you these three pots of money, carryforward is where we do most of them, I do a lot of my work on a daily basis, monthly, weekly, monthly kind of thing, pay-go, the city fund balance, they provide money to us, we put it here, hoping maybe, so Patsy Climb, for instance, is a big project that's in the capital improvement plan, okay? That was not touched during the renovation 15 years ago, so those seats and carpet in that, in the Patsy Climb Theater are from the 70s, and so it needs to be changed, it needs to be fixed, and so it's included in our capital improvement plan, as hopefully a way for the city to provide us, because we think it's going to be between half a million and a million dollars. Now, that carryforward piece can go up to a million dollars, we did pay for, we paid in the last several years, you see athletic field upgrades there, at the next to the last bullet there, we paid for, we paid for new tennis courts to the cost of almost $600,000, we bought a new track that cost about 1.3 million, and that was part of our carryforward, plus some donations that we received via the WEF. And then we also paid for a new football field in the last four or five years, where we replaced the turf, because it wasn't passing the test for, whenever a player gets tackled on it, you have to have passive tests on the hardness of the field, and it wasn't passing that in several areas, we had to come in and replace it, but that was up to a million dollars, and so we did pay for that out of our carryforward, because we were fortunate enough to have a lot. If we don't, we would get to the city to do. Roofwork is also a very expensive piece of our capital improvement plan, you'll see some work on Daniel Morgan in the company. So in the last capital improvement plan, we completed 90%, 91% of our projects that were in that plan from last year, the only one we didn't get to was some concrete work at Hanley, and we've moved that to this coming year. Some of these they completed by the end of the year, because I actually built this presentation back in November, and some of it has been finished, so the chiller has been installed at Virginia Avenue, our student lift at Corals has been replaced, and so all of these now are completed. But you can see, from the federal funding, out of our capital improvement plan, we spent over $7 million on our projects, I mean, our HVAC projects at our schools in the past year. It's really took two years, but the remainder of it was in the second year. And then out of our carryforward money, you can see we spent about 1.3 million on various items throughout the district, and you can see the different schools that received additional work.
Really quickly, and Jason likes to make this point, so correct me if I misspeak, Jason, but all that, all those expenditures you see there for carryforward are expenditures that we don't have to go to the city for approval. We have that money, thank you very much to Mr. Smith and his due diligence and his cost-saving focus, so we don't have to go to the city to implement judges' eye, or to, you know, replace the door locks in classrooms, and it saves time, and it saves, just, you know, the discussion and having them debate, well, do they really need $200,000 for this, or do they need 175? We're able to do all of this with carryforward, and so credit where credit is due, that's a great thing for us.
It is, it's a positive thing, and if you have a counterpart on the city council that you work with in your ward or whatever, thank that, because this provides us with the flexibility that we need to do things that we need to do, without, I mean, you are already our governing body, without having another governing body there to look at it as well, and say, no, no, maybe you shouldn't, you know, that kind of thing. So, this is a great opportunity for us. My last district did it as well, the school district I was at before, I think this is kind of a, now a standard kind of procedure, because what you, what happens is if you don't get the money from the budget, at the end of the fiscal year, what do you do? You start running around and spending like crazy and stuff, and you can't make good decisions at that point, right? And you don't have, maybe you don't have visibility on something that breaks down, or a heat, a boiler that's going to, that's not going to pass inspection, that kind of thing, and so this really gives us that flexibility, so it's, I appreciate it, I know we appreciate it, as Brian mentioned, so, yes, a great opportunity.
And the carryforward cannot and should not be used for pay raises.
Right, salaries, any kind of ongoing costs, right?
Sometimes that comes up in conversations, people, why don't you use your carryforward to pay the teachers, and it's not what it's for.
No, have it.
Right, exactly.
That's the exact answer right there, it's a one-time expenditure, I spent it on classroom door locks, I don't have to go out and buy new locks again. If I skip it, if I use it for pay raises, I got to pay that pay raise next year, that's what I want. Okay, so, in our, in the capital improvement plan right now, as it's written, these are some of the things that we've got going on the next three years, okay? Next year, and so I tell you it's a calendar year, okay, calendar year 2025, that is because we will likely get this approved next, at the end of this month, right, you guys will look at it, approve it, and then I will basically have until the next CIP comes out in December. This is while the, we typically look at things from June to July, or July to June, we look at the capital improvement plan over the, over a calendar year, okay, because that's just how it works out. I don't get, the city doesn't transfer the final amount of money to that account until after the audit is complete, after the fiscal year, so it's, so the money from last fiscal year is just now getting put in there, probably got put in there last month, but I don't know, but it's usually around this time that it gets put in there, so I have to work on a calendar year, just so you know, in case it's too deep, but. So next year, so this coming year, we're going to replace three buses, you're going to see that in just a second. We are going to work on that concrete work, we're going to take care, Virginia Avenue's playground is in desperate need of replacement, it's a, it's a very old one, it's got some broken parts to it that are not replaceable, so we are going to replace the Virginia Avenue playground and upgrade it. We do have various security improvements throughout the district as well, some landscaping stuff. This is going to be the first year that I don't have a gigantic project on the capital improvement plan for a calendar year.
I haven't, I got to talk to you.
Exactly, and that doesn't happen, we laugh, but it's true. But yeah, this is the first year, I mean, we've had, we've always had Shahada on there, we've had the HVAC at Frederick Douglass, and we've had John Kerr, so, and we have the CAL there, so, this is the first year that there's like a little bit of breathing room, and then we'll jump right into, hopefully, Garland Corals. And so you can see in calendar year 26, if the city gives us that money, we may actually start that conceptual study for corals after the summer of this year, if depending on if they want to give us the money after July 1, but right now, we put it on a, for calendar year 26. You can see that set aside for the turf field, we still like to do that, save a little money as we can. There is an area of the Hanley Bowl, or the Hanley Campus, that needs work, the emergency parking area outside of the Hanley Bowl is in terrible shape, the Garden Club of Virginia is working on plans through Landscape Architect for us, they're going to provide us with plans and all that design cost, they've already taken care of that, we just have to pay for the work, and so we're going to look into whatever they come up with, we're going to bring that up, and we'll bring it back to you, and let's look at it. That Patsy Climb seating is on there, we do, our Daniel Morgan locker rooms are in bad shape, again, not touched for, since the 70s when that building was built. We need to get the Virginia Avenue, we, like we did at Frederick Douglass, we need to get Virginia Avenue's lighting and HVAC, we've already kind of got a preliminary HVAC design plan for that, but we need to do the lighting as well, and get that ready. Frederick Douglass Elementary School is our only school that doesn't have a hardwood gym, it has a tile gym, so it's like a, like literally like the tile you see in the hallway, and they would like a hardwood gymnasium like the rest of the schools. And then always, you will always see on our CIP bus replacements, okay? We have about 50 buses in our fleet, and if you replace three buses a year, that puts you almost at 20 years before, if I replace a bus today, I may not be able to replace that bus again for almost 20, 18 years or so. Now, we keep them up and running, the city, city maintenance shop does a great job for us and helps us with that, but it does, we do need to stay on schedule for bus replacements, otherwise you get behind very quickly, you go two years without, and suddenly you're six buses deep into failing to meet that 18 to 20-year timeframe. It used to be the state would like you to replace buses at 12 years, now they recommend you try and replace them at 15, we're in that neighborhood. But we always need to keep us, always need to keep buses replaced, just like your vehicle, they're just used all the time, and they are depreciating ourselves. And then further out, 27, we would, we, Daniel Morgan roof, we have a section of that roof, a very large section, we got a quote on it, it's going to cost us a million dollars easily, but we would do that in phases based on when we could get the money for it, but there's a section of that roof that needs to be replaced, and again, corals is right in there, that's our big, that'll be our big project moving forward through 26, 27. And again, this is all in the document, this is just a slide that records it. There is also, I'll talk about it in a second, so these were some of the additional requests that whenever, so one part of my process is I go and sit down with every principal, I take my team, and we sit down with them, and they kind of throw out things, and they say, look, I would like to see this, and this, and this. There's a lot of things that we can do out of my operating budget, and so we kind of, we try to parse those out, and say, okay, we'll see if we can take care of these from my, from my operating budget versus going into the capital. Sometimes it's just that they're not, they're not at that $50,000 threshold, and most of this stuff is not. Some of it is in study, so like technology improvements at Hanley, right, they want more additional signage, the marquee that goes around the Patsy Climb Theater has died, it's over 15 years, and it's, it no longer works, and so they would like us to replace that. The gym scoreboard is aging out as well, it's nice to have, and it's beautiful up there, but it's not a priority, we do have a typical gym, you know, we're Hanley, right, so we love the technology in there, but we do have a scoreboard that works, but if we can, if we can fit it into the budget, we will replace their bigger one. Their plantarium there is aging out as well, the equipment in that, in the plantarium is aging. Yeah, I know, right, it's been about six or seven years, I think. Yeah, I know, right? It's been about six or seven years, I think. It's a, software just changes and equipment goes by the wayside. So these are some of the things that we will look at, some of the things that we.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Probably a really dumb question about planetarium.
Yeah.
Having not been in one in probably thirty-five years, but with modern technology, is it still a viable educational experience? Like, I'm thinking, you can put on those VR goggles now and be a planetarium.
It's a great one. I, I do not know. I don't think, I think they have a class. They have a strong, they have a strong.
Yeah, that's always a challenge. It's kind of the neat, you see these, like, planetarians, like, oh, cool, we have a planetarium. Well, then you gotta have a person to run it, and you have to have a class. And so that has come and gone. So the last teacher we've had was Emily Badman, who's now a assistant principal. They did hire a new teacher this year who is in that field. And so she's getting that kind of program back up and running. And hopefully you get longevity out of that position. Right. If you have a champ, again, if you have a champion for that, then it's a great thing. If no one cares about it, then it's, it's like, well, here's our planetarium, and nobody uses it. But if you haven't been inside, it's really beautiful. Got new seats in there a couple of years, well, eight years ago, some beautiful seats. And there's a lot of opportunity to work with elementary kids and have field trips and, like, it has a lot of promise, but.
Need that champion.
We need that champion.
I just wonder if the technology has surpassed what a planetarium was for us back in the eighties and nineties.
Your question.
You're probably onto something, but we should.
I've seen. There's one at W U that they use all the time to do a vest. Here you go. It's like a big deal. Again, that would be pretty low on the, you know, you've got, so one of the things on this list, that bullet that says sound absorption, it's Shahada, that's probably our biggest problem, is because we have a classroom there that the HVAC interrupts with the class. And so that move, that's really at the top of the list right now. It's trying to figure out how to pay for that, and to have an engineer come in and look at it, and try and figure out a way to, to quiet that equipment, because that one classroom is bothersome. So they're working around that, but that's probably the top priority on that list. And some of these things are more, some of them are not realistic. So you'll see, I'll show you on this slide here. John Kerr has asked for more parking. It's basically on a postage stamp of land.
That's my personal rate.
So yeah, they have a mass, they have a parking shortage, but I can't just make land appear. And so, so that's at the bottom of the list, too. But that's one of those ones that's just not conceivable. Like, there's not much I can do for that on that. Same thing with Quarles. They want parking, well, they wanted parking lot, but we, that would have taken away some of their playgrounds. So they were like, we don't want to lose our parking, our playground parking lots. So some of these things. But there are some things up here that we, we will take care of. You know, some of this stuff at Quarles, we would probably, you know, blacktop resealing and fence replacement and parking lot lighting and P A systems, that would all come as part of that big project, renovation, right? So that kind of stuff is, would get delayed until we, we look at the, the innovation effects kind of. You know, this right here, Virginia Avenue, one of her big things is she wants to fence off, there's an access road that runs behind it, where traffic can cross, and the kids can go in. We want to fence that off. So that's something that we're looking closely. That's a higher priority. So yeah, so all of these things get asked about in these meetings with the principals. We, we take notes, we make, we put them, we put them down, and then we flesh them out through our process with cabinet, making decisions on where we're going to head with the big capital improvement plan. So there are two projects in the current plan that will require bond support. And this is where we will go and, and talk to the city next week and focus on these two things here. Garland Quarles Elementary School opened in fifty-five, renovation in ninety-seven, added a wing and cafeteria, gym, classrooms. But the mechanicals are at the end of their life. That's, that's again, why you see it at the bottom of the scores of the E U R I. So it's, you know, it's twenty-eight years old. That nineteen fifty-five section is, is probably, I would say is the darkest hallway we have in all of our schools in Winchester. And you'll see a picture, I got a couple of pictures here that I included. Virginia Avenue, same thing, mechanical really is the focus there. Their, their envelope is really in good, pretty good shape. They do have some doors that could use some work. For Garland Quarles, it's more about that fifty-five section, you know, that, that was built and was renovated. They, they changed some floors out and they painted and stuff, but they didn't, we literally have doors that have been on there since it was built. And so the envelope is, is not as efficient, so we needed to change that. But there, at Virginia Avenue, they've got a couple of doors here and there, but for the most part, their envelope is in pretty good condition. And their roof is in really good condition, because we just replaced it in the last probably four years. And roof is very, is a, is a big piece of that energy efficiency as well. Just some photographs of the chiller, you know, that's, that's your HVAC unit right there. That's the one that chills the, the building for, and you can see it's been around a lot. The roof, we've got a lot of roof work on Quarles that we need to do. Again, hopefully holding off, we'll patch it, repair it, and keep it, keep it working until we get to a renovation. The basement of that building, blood, it's been, I don't know if you've heard, but we've mentioned it several times in board meetings in the past. There is some asbestos in that building. It's sealed off and can't get in it. It's, it's perfectly safe, but, but it does exist, and the basement is just in bad shape. And so you can see along the brickwork here where the water gets behind the walls here, it's been kind of bleaching through the bricks and stuff. So it's just an old building. It's, it's, it just needs work, and it's either be, like I said, torn down or replaced. And so that's part of that study that we have coming up in the next year, trying to figure out what's the best thing to do with this building. Some more pictures, again, that dark hallway, limited ADA, there's, the only way you can get down, this is, we just replaced this. This is that lift I was talking about that we just replaced at Quarles. And the library is, is dark and not conducive to, to elementary library work. So some of the things that we've kicked around, again, these are just some options that we are looking at. We will get more information on this from, from a team of architects and engineers whenever we go in to do a study, but these are our preliminary thoughts. If, if the minimum, if they're like, you can only do the minimum, we can only give you, you know, the minimum amount, the minimum right now is HVAC and lighting. If we can improve those two things, that could help. But the envelope is probably not going to be great to, to keep that at HVAC efficient. So I feel like it would be almost a waste of money to go in there and just plop money on just those two things. What's that?
It would be a mandate.
Yeah, it would be a huge mandate. Yeah, sure. So then, Virginia Avenue, you know, we, we calculated, I, I called Bladen County, they are, they, they build schools every year. So I called them and said, what are you guys paying on a per square footage basis? They sent me some information. I took it and interpreted it and, and put it into these numbers. So these numbers are based upon last year's, their most recent quotes and bids that they got. Now, I know inflation's been kind of wacky, so prices probably gone up a little bit, but this is based on pretty fairly new data. We think about twenty-seven million, and that's if, for, if we did a sixty percent renovation for the, for the, for the nineteen fifty-five section, okay, which is about forty-five thousand square feet. And then we did HVAC lighting for the whole building. So that building, that wing that was built in, in the nineteen nineties, we would just do HVAC and lighting in that section, and we would completely renovate the fifty section. And you could do that. Probably takes a little bit longer. It's also a little bit more expensive, because you're doing, you know, you're, you're not just coming in and leveling and replacing and that kind of thing. It's, it's more expensive. But, but then you could go and probably do all of it for upwards of forty million dollars. Again, this is with, who's this one here?
That's the one with the expansion of ten classrooms.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Still, still a renovation of the sixty percent.
Yeah.
But the option three is what, what we really would like to do, because it, it includes moving your fifth graders from the intermediate school, remember, fifth graders are ten years old, back to elementary, which is where I think age-appropriate wise, we would like them to be. I have yet to meet a parent that's super excited about sending their ten-year-old to Danny Morgan Intermediate School, what used to be the middle school. So if we added capacity at Quarles, then we would be able to do that across the board. We would have to rezone to make that all happen, but that would be the, that would be the best thing for our families and our students.
Just to drive that point home, I drove my daughter to the bus stop this week, because it was cold and snow and all that. And she goes to Danny Morgan, and I'm sitting there with her, and there were, I don't know, six students standing on the corner. And I asked her, there was a young student there who came with their mom. I said, oh, who's that? And she said, I don't know. It's a fifth grader. And I said, does her mom walk her every time? And she said, yeah, every time. And I was like, because that's what you do when your kids are elementary. You walk them. And this, this particular fifth grader was like kicking the snow, well, the eighth graders are sitting there with their headphones, being moody and angsty. This, this kid was like kicking the snow and playing around, and her mom was there. And I was like, that kid belongs at an elementary school, not in a, in a middle school. So anyway, I'm very much in favor of moving those fifth graders back. I think that would be a great, a great thing for our division eventually, if we can.
And so if we added those ten classrooms, you know, I think you would, you would create that capacity to rezones, rezone the city and have enough seats available to get the fifth graders back down into your.
But this one still has the nineteen nineties.
Yeah.
It does.
Portion. Now, the last time we presented this to council, some council members said, well, what would it cost to tear the whole thing down and build brand new? I'm, I would be more than happy to, to go down that road with anybody who's got a checkbook. So.
It would be more than thirty-one million dollars.
But it would then give you a brand new school, right?
And more energy efficient.
More energy efficient.
Oh, yeah.
And that would be fantastic. But.
But you know, I.
A new elementary school these days is.
Fifty, sixty. I can only imagine you would see a fifty percent increase.
What Quarles has going for it over there is space, though. They have all that, like.
They do. Unfortunately, they have utilities that run on it. So it's going to really limit the orientation. But that's, again, something I need, I would need to get the architects to play in on, and whether or not they can do. They do, yeah.
The front yard, you mean?
They do, yeah. The city, they have a very large sewage drain.
So we couldn't build on top of that?
You can, yeah. Unless you, you could reroute it. I mean, that's basically what they're doing out here. You know, the city's gone in, and they've actually pulled up pipes, and they're moving them over on the street and, and putting them in the new thing. They're actually rerouting stuff. So you can reroute stuff. It's just a matter of what the cost will be, the additional cost. If you wanted to orient that building differently, again, you just have to make sure that you're not blocking access to anything.
But we can build up, which is what we're thinking about here, right? Second floor or something.
You can build up, yeah. And that's what we have, yeah, John Kerr and Virginia Avenue, second floor, and Frederick Douglass. Yeah, all free.
And of course, under this one, we would close the intermediate school. There wouldn't be an intermediate school. We'd just have a traditional middle school, which most middle schools are sixth grade through eighth grade. So you'd have some costs, some operational cost savings, like those in school.
We're going to talk about the, the Road Center over there or something like that. It, it makes financially some, a lot of sense.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. Sorry. So you're looking at ten classrooms, so that's about two hundred and forty students on the math side, right? So with rezoning, how would that impact the other elementary schools? Like, are they at a capacity where they could accept the rollover of those students?
Well, that's what you would try to do. You would probably take, you would try to reduce the, the number of third and fourth graders at this, maybe say, Virginia Avenue, and move them to Quarles or to John Kerr, and then create that capacity for the fifth graders. So you would have to adjust grade levels and stuff like that.
Kerr also has capacity. So Kerr.
And so does Frederick Douglass.
We are not, like, you hear from Frederick County a lot that they are over capacity. We are not over capacity.
Virginia Avenue is our tightest school.
Right.
Like, they're, they're.
Yeah, that's what I worry about.
Yeah, you can't put, put more kids.
No, you wouldn't be able to just drop fifth graders down. You would have to definitely rezonate where someone can come out.
And then, I'm sorry, you were saying with the intermediate school, that would be used for something else then?
Well, that would open up some space at intermediate school. Jason had some ideas of moving the Road Center there, and maybe early childhood or something like that would go over there.
And you have capacity, you may have an early childhood center where all your preschool kids are together, right? And, you know, it's a happy little Disneyland. And then you also have your, more space for our, our alternative programming. And Danny Morgan intermediate side is laid out very nicely to, to separate and make sure there's no overlap. Our typical cohort's about three hundred to three hundred and forty students.
So you would bring those back down and split them amongst four schools, and then have that three hundred seats open up for other things.
That's interesting.
It's, I mean, it's going to be interesting. We're going to talk to the city about it next week and see when we can get started. Hopefully, we can get some money from them to get, to get, to start working on that concept study.
Putting new school teams in that concept.
Just a great thought.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely. They would kick that around for sure. They would provide us with some, some data and information on that for sure. So this slide is just a little bit about, so right now, we are actually in the midst of a facility condition assessment. Back in October, we hired Gordian. And as part of our Empower twenty twenty-five strategic plan, we hired Gordian to come in and do a facility condition assessment. So they've gone through all of our schools. They did walkthroughs from basement to roof, and they have documented everything that's in our buildings. And they have gone into their database. They're national, they are a national cost database type of company. They, they have construction costs around the country. And so they can tell us within pretty good accuracy of what may or may not cost us to do different types of work at each of our schools. What they're going to do is they're going to help us prioritize our buildings. And they've already kind of started doing that at a meeting with them last week. And then right now, I just got the, the data package from them. And so I have a meeting this week with my team to sit down and review all of that data and provide them with feedback on that, because some things they don't know about. They, they use my C I P to look at some of the things we want to work on. So we have to go in and review the data and then provide them with feedback on it. Because some, again, some things, Brian, Brian, our systems engineer, he knows what's going on with them. They don't know whether or not something's constantly breaking or working and that kind of thing. And so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to hash through that data. And they're going to take it and prioritize it and then help us. That's going to pour over into the C I P in the future. And so the C I P you see in the future, after this facility condition assessment is done, will be one that's based upon real results, real analytics, and real current pricing. Because once they dump this stuff into the database, we can go in and pull that information from the database at any time and have an idea of what it's going to cost to do that. So that we are, C I P will be more realistic in the long term. And so my hope is, is that once we finish with this, we think we should be able to wrap it up in March, is I'll rework the C I P and maybe bring you back something that is, that provides you with insight on what kind of strategies and what kind of priorities we're going to need to see. Questions or comments? We're kind of asking along the way, Mr. S.
It's not a question. It's just a comment. I'm just glad that the access road thing is on their radar, because I personally walked back there, and I was thinking, I was going somewhere, and there's a lot of them, and I was just thinking how easy it was for a student to come out, or somebody to go in there and just take a kid and then go. So I'm, I'm glad that this school is now like putting that on their radar. It really concerned me.
Yeah, my department has it on our radar, and we're, we'll probably get that done soon.
Okay. We got a treat tonight. We don't usually hear from Mr. McBride.
Next there, a quick question. Even more targeted.
All right. Good evening. What I have tonight is informational and then for future action, for an R F P that we released in the fall for pricing on wide area network. Just real quickly, non-technical, but the wide area network, essentially, it's the, in our situation now, it's the fiber optic cables that connect this building to all of our other buildings that are, to our network. And they're, that's generally provided by a service provider at a monthly cost. So a little bit of background info, the, the contract that we're in right now was awarded in twenty fourteen. So it's been a ten-year contract. That was a result of an R F P we did then, a joint R F P with the city government and a vendor from Charlotte, North Carolina, won that bid, and they came up and built out. And a vendor from Charlotte, North Carolina, uh, won that bid and they came up and built out, uh, the fiber optic across the city for government and for school entities. And we've been in that contract since then. And you can see right now we're paying around about eighty-nine hundred a month total. Um, and that's for eight sites, uh, that we pay for as part of that network. Um, like I mentioned, we did, we did the RFP in the fall. I think we released it in October. And again, we did do a, reached out to, Hudson Winchester and we did work again on a joint RFP. Uh, our contract, current contract ends at the end of June. Their contract, uh, it extends beyond that for about a year. So, um, whether or not they're going to act on this, I was just pricing, I don't know. But I did offer them to be part of it in case they went to it at that point in time. So. Uh, the contract was written for an initial term of sixty months and then up to five, twelve-month extensions for a total of ten years. And, uh, there's a link there. I'm not going to pull it up now, but if anybody wants to look at it, there is a link here to the RFP. It's a, it's a pretty lengthy document. But if you, anybody would want to review it, it's out there. This page here is just a summary of the pricing that we got back. Uh, we received responses from three different service providers. You can see we have been bid at multiple different speeds, one gig, ten gig, fifteen gigs and twenty gigs. Ten gigs is the speed that we're currently at now on our links between here and all of our sites. And, um, when you can see here, vendor one, who in this case was Shinto, they were the low bidder at, um, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month per link at that speed. And the one thing, uh, really significant for them is, and they have seven build entities and all the other, of the other two providers, they have eight build entities. Um, they didn't include documentation why, but I did verify with them. And, um, I think it makes sense that it's, it's because Shinto was also our internet service provider. So they already have an instance here in this building. I think that's why they're not charging for what they call like a head-end location that typically a vendor would charge for.
Who's vendor three? That's a lot more.
Yeah. Yeah. Vendor three was Comcast and the other. And vendor two is our current vendor compared. Um, so from a monthly perspective, not much, not very significant between them and Shinto, but, um, overall, I thought the contract, it does add up to be fairly significant, um, because of the, the build entity being more. So, um, just real quick math, because I didn't include it in there. Like I mentioned, right now we're about eighty-nine hundred a month. So it looks like, um, new cost from the existing vendor is approximately twenty-four hundred a month less than what we pay now. And new potential cost from the lowest bidder, approximately thirty-five hundred a month less than what we're currently paying now. So over the course of five years or ten years, significant cost savings over what we're paying now. Um, for no less quality of, of bandwidth. So, um, my recommendation is, um, for us to move forward with the lowest bidder, Shinto. I will say that with one caveat, that like I mentioned, they are our internet service provider. So there is the potential that in the future, if, um, service would go down or like a fiber optic cable could be cut, we potentially could lose the internet and the wide area network. Um, I don't know how significant that is, but essentially like, you know, if you lose access to the internet and can't get out to the outside world or potentially if the wide area network was still up, uh, we could place intercom calls, for example, between school buildings. Uh, school buildings could still access data that's on our service house in this building. The likelihood of this being down at the same time is very unlikely. And then, and then, uh, any of these service providers, and it's part of the RFP, it's written in there. You're required, we require them to provide like ninety-nine point nine percent uptime and like service level agreements to respond in certain amount of hours. So if we were a manufacturing facility and we were dependent on the bottom line and we were producing widgets and we had to sell them and it would be like extremely critical if we, if the internet was down for a couple of hours, then our recommendation may be different. But with those are the business that we're in and if our internet could go down for a few hours, which likely will not, um, we can just probably change the strategy of what we're doing in the classroom for a few hours. So in this scenario, I would, I would make the recommendation that we take the lowest cost provider. It has a significant cost savings over time. And, um, the only reason I'm bringing it to you is I believe by school board policy, because of the life of the contract, it is over a three hundred thousand dollar commitment over five years. Um, and then again, potential to extend that. So.
Really quickly for the new numbers, it's three hundred thousand, the new threshold. So our, um, directors are, um, they have the, I don't know how to say this, but they, they don't need to come to us for expenditures three hundred thousand dollars or lower or two ninety-nine and lower, I should say. Once it's a three hundred thousand dollar mark, they have to come to, to the board, um, to see permission to spend those funds. Really quickly, are we okay with the ten gig speed? We don't, it's like, because according to the table, it looked like we could go up to fifteen and still save money.
Yeah. Yeah. We monitor that regularly and there would be no reason right now for us to do that. If at any point in time there is, we will.
Okay. So your recommendation is to stay with the ten. Okay.
Can I clarify? You, you, um, issued this RFP jointly with the city?
Yes.
So do we have to agree with them?
No. No, we wrote it specifically to be independent and our pricing structures were independent and they can choose a different provider if they choose to. But it does give them the leeway to use this pricing and not have to issue their own RFP when they're ready to.
Mr. Rapala, is there any, um, disadvantage to switching, um, service providers? I mean, if they've provided excellent services, there any advantage to keeping that? And likewise, you know, if we switch, is there going to be any kind of potential for disruption with, during that switch?
Yeah. So there will be some work involved. Um, there'll be a little bit of work involved by my staff, primarily just building access and maybe joining a contractor on site. If there is fiber that's got to be brought, brought into several of our facilities by the new provider, that is, that will be a hundred percent at their cost. Um, there's no extra charge for them to get that, get the facilities in here. So potentially yes, some extra workload. Um.
But it would be over the summer.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll happen. It'll be live July one and there won't be any downtime. They'll, they'll bring it up in parallel. They know about, about the contract. It has to be ready to go live prior to July one.
Okay. Great. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. We typically do not take action at work sessions, but, um, we have these two things that kind of need to be addressed. So when, when something's timed sensitive, obviously we do it. Um, but this is a little bit, uh, out of practice.
Yeah. So, um, I have before you, we can't approve this calendar until we have the board here. So, um, here's your first opportunity. These dates have been out publicly for quite a while. They've been in draft form, but, um, I'm asking you to approve your schedule for the rest of the school year. And, um.
I, I have one question before. I, I didn't, I apologize. When is spring break? We don't have a meeting during spring break.
Let me make sure.
I apologize.
I got it right here. They left.
Did the briefing, I think, and make sure that.
It is April fourteenth through eighteen.
Yeah.
And when school doesn't meet, we typically don't meet.
That's what I assume.
Raise your motion.
Yes, I will raise my motion.
Motion to approve twenty twenty-five school board meeting schedule as of this.
Motion by Ms. Harris, seconded by Mr. Burchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. We have adopted our schedule. One last time, Mr. Smith.
Okay. I know you'll put another twenty minutes here. Okay. So at, uh, at our, uh, November board meeting, we brought buses to the school board for approval so that we can make the purchase once the money got transferred. And, uh, we found out after we got it approved that we missed the, the contract ending, the contract that ended in the middle of November. And so we got, we had to use the new pricing for the new contract. And so our, um, contract pricing increased by four percent, uh, from one forty-five to a hundred and fifty-one thousand. We are asking for two buses to replace currently buses, which we will then transfer the older buses to our substitute status. And then we surplus our, uh, our oldest to most troublesome buses.
Motion to approve participants' two buses at the state contract price of a hundred and fifteen thousand and fifty-four dollars each as presented.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Island, seconded by Ms. Harris. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. All right. Okay. All right. This is where we will move into closed session. Mr. Burchett?
Pursuant to section two point two dot three seven one one A one of the Federal Virginia motion that the board could be in a closed session for purposes of stepping personal matters to the construction class license position, substitute students force that roster and retire.
All right. Motion by Mr. Burchett. Seconded by Ms. Harris. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Okay. We're in closed session. Karen, Ben and Mary, uh, closed session is behind the stage. There's a little room back there. And there's usually, um, food over here and that. So grab your food.